It is six o'clock and I will call the February twelfth, two thousand and twenty-five meeting. That was postponed due to weather from yesterday, the eleventh, to order. We do have a quorum and we have Pastor John Langham from the Withfield Presbyterian Church to provide the invocation. If you would please stand and remain standing for the pledge.
Let me pray. Gracious God, we gather here tonight and we acknowledge, uh, we acknowledge you. We acknowledge our need for you in our lives. We acknowledge our need for you here tonight. And we thank you for those who are here, who have come to, uh, not only lead, but to serve, uh, to serve this community. And we pray of God tonight that as we gather, uh, that the, um, choices and decisions and things that are made, uh, would be, uh, wise. We pray that they would be, um, in accordance with your desire and, and best to our ability of your will for this town and this community. And we, uh, we pray for that and ask for that. Again, thank you for everybody who is here and willing to come and serve. And we ask your blessing on what you did. It's in your name that we pray.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. The first item on the agenda is we have a public hearing set for a proposed procurement, procurement ordinance update. Mr. Bear, I'll let you read the public notice.
In compliance with the Code of Virginia, nineteen fifty amendments there too, the With County Board of Supervisors will conduct a public hearing to consider a proposed ordinance entitled Procurement Ordinance of With County, Virginia. The public hearing shall be held on Tuesday, February eleventh, two thousand and twenty-five at six P. M. in the boardroom of the With County Office Building, three forty South Sixth Street, Withfield, Virginia. The public may comment in person at the public hearing or submit written responses to County Clerk Martha Collins at the address below or by email at mgcollins@withco.org. A copy of the proposed ordinance may be found online at www.withco.org or at the County Minister's Office, two ninety South Sixth Street, Suite three fifty, Withfield, Virginia for a public review by order of the With County Board of Supervisors.
All right. And we did not have anybody to sign up for the public comment. I'll open the floor up for any discussion on the proposed amendment. Mr. Bear, do you have anything to add?
No, I'll, I'll just add, Mr. Chairman, um, that, uh, this has been a work over the last little bit to, uh, update, uh, our proposed procurement ordinance. Um, as you can see, you've got a, an ordinance and then we have a, a manual to go with it and a purchase card policy. Um, staff would recommend your all's approval of this ordinance.
This time I'll close the public hearing portion and I'll entertain a motion to approve the proposed amendment to the pu- procurement. They need to name it something else. Procurement ordinance.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Terry. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Morgan. Is there any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Burnett?
Uh.
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 So approved.
Mr. Chairman, I would request that you all also go ahead and adopt the, uh, purchasing policy to go with this. Um, and also the, I'll get the correct name out here, purchase card policy as well.
So moved.
All right. Have a motion by Mr. Smith. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Terry. Again, is there any questions or discussion on that? And, and just for transparency's sake, the, the purchase card policy, um, will be monitored. It's just, um, it, it cuts down a lot of paperwork. A lot of paperwork. Right. Does anybody else have anything? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry?
Uh.
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 So approved. Anything else with that, Mr. Bear?
Mr. Chairman, if I might, and I'll ask County Attorney to help, help step in here in the process, um, I would ask if you all would reconsider your motion to adopt the ordinance. It has a, an effective date, which is blank. Um, and I would request that you all amend that motion to adopt the ordinance with effective date.
I would say, well, I would say when we voted on it, effective.
Yeah.
Mr. Forrester, do we need to?
That's fine.
So we don't, yeah.
That's good. Thank you.
All right. Anything else, Mr. Bear?
No, sir.
All right. We'll move on to citizens' time. As always, as always, I'll call you up. You'll have three minutes. The first person we have signed up is Mr. Corey Chapel.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. I, Corey Chapel, come before you this evening to present a new slate of officers for the Ivanhoe Fire Department. On Monday, February tenth, Chief Jared Price resigned as chief of the department and according to the bylaws, I assume is acting chief. I as well held an emergency meeting with the department on February tenth at sixteen hundred hours to go through all five line officer positions to allow the membership to voice their concerns and vote that they trust and want them to lead the department from this point forward. So the membership had nominated and voted on each position and the results are as follows on the slate that was presented to you earlier. I, as I continue to hope this list is acceptable. One request that I do ask on behalf of our membership is that the board does release a public statement acknowledging that there was no wrongdoing on the department itself, either as far as running the cause, the personnel, or the financial liability that we have. There was no wrongdoing on anything on our department and pretty much the public has took what had happened Sunday and has ran with it and come up with assumptions and rumors. And it has affected our department, the citizens, and our community, and as well as our trust with other departments. People are starting to look at us in a different way. And I want to protect our citizens. I want to protect our members of the department and make sure that this does go and get cleared up as soon as possible. We're out here to serve our community, protect it with our lives, and we'll continue to do so at any point from this point forward with the utmost responsibility and respect that we have. Firstly, I want to make sure that my community is protected, my department is protected, as well as the members. We are a strong department with a whole lot of training that continues to grow every day. We have members in there now that are actively taking more classes to better themselves, to better their knowledge and education to be able to help and serve the community as a whole. Each person that joins our department, we do so to protect and serve the community. Each and every one of us holds that true in our heart each and every day as we continue to move forward. So I ask the board to please consider our new slate and allow us to continue moving on, to be there to work, communicate, and protect each other the way it needs to.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Corey.
Thank you, Corey.
That's all we have signed up for citizens' time. I will, I will say that, um, we do have a closed session at the end of the meeting to discuss this. There he is. Mr. Parnell, um, do you have Mr. Chapel's contact information? As soon as we're done, he will contact you via cell phone. And if he has your email, which I hope is preferred, um, because we're going to start putting everything in writing, and he will contact you by cell phone and let you know whatever action we do, and he'll follow up with an email. And, um, a- as far as what you brought up about us releasing anything, uh, you know, I, I'll just tell you from, from my point of view, we didn't release anything. There was stuff that was released on social media by the fire department that, had that not happened, the community wouldn't have went to that. As far as any concerns about financials, y'all know where I work every day. If that was concerned, we would have went a different direction. You know, as far as providing for the community, we had a Plan A, a Plan B, and a Plan C. In the past, board supervisors have showed up with a chain and a lock. We didn't do that because we want to protect our community. So I don't know about releasing the press release because y'all kind of created that. Now, there was some, some concerns that, over the years, have come to us and we addressed them. But trust me when I say that the community was going to be covered and there was nothing illegal. There was no type of investigation or this would have went a totally different way. And with that, I'll shut up and, and open, open it up for any comments.
Yeah, I think, uh, I don't think nobody up here, as the chairman said, nothing illegal was going on. Um, the support that you do for the community, it's there. You run, you run your calls. Uh, I think you hit it on the head, Corey, and said that you're a well-trained organization, right? There's no doubt that you're all not trained to do the job, right? But when the community brings issues to us, we have to address them, and that's what we did. We weren't going to shut it down. Uh, that was an option. Mr. Chairman taught, previous boards would have showed up, as the chairman mentioned. Uh, but we weighed the options and we took the lesser for the community, which I know that's where y'all's hearts at, right? So, um, I think we'll, we'll look at this slate that you've presented on when we do our closed session and then we'll come back and, um, Mr. Parnell, he's, he's back in there somewhere, I think. He's here. Uh, as the chairman said, he will reach out. But again, there was no, no one on this board, and I'll just speak for me personally, I never once thought that there was any illegal actions taken, whether they finances or whatever. Uh, but there were some issues that needed to be addressed. Uh, some of my experience personally, um, seeing it with my own eyes, heard it with my own ears, uh, I was kind of shocked, to be honest with you. So, and that's where we stand.
Do you have anything?
I just want to let y'all know that I have supported the Ivanhoe Fire Department for everything that y'all received the last three years I've been on the board, that y'all are in my heart always. I went to school with many, many people and I have known the community. The community has always been my focus. There was things, as the other board members have said, that concerned me and what my hope and what I believe will happen is that y'all will be stronger moving forward. And, and so that is the goal. And, and so, and y'all will continue to have my support for anything that y'all need. And I really hope y'all reach out if you do need anything.
And, and, and I said I was going to shut up and I always lie when I say that. Number one, I appreciate everybody's attendance. I appreciate what you do and I appreciate the statement that, that you put on here that you, you appreciate the board because, um, I've been around for a long time. I've seen a lot of boards flow through here. And I and the six other people up here have absolutely worked hard to provide equipment, funding, and, 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 and so I appreciate that, that sentiment. And as I get prepared to, to step away along with Ms. Lawson, um, that means a lot. You didn't come in here, you didn't hoop and holler and, you know, all that. Cause we're kind of laid back, but we appreciate the core. And, uh, that, that, that says a lot about the organization, um, the foundation of the organization. So I appreciate that. So, but we'll let you know. And you're more than welcome to say, stay for the rest of the meeting. Sometimes it's fun. Not according to this gym.
We, we do, as a department, really appreciate everything that you guys have done for us. We wouldn't be where we are without the support of you guys. And the equipment that we've got, pretty much the best we have, and we'll continue to grow and be a strong department, everything with that. We will be just with you guys as well as our community and guys.
Awesome.
Thank you.
All right. We'll move on to the next item on the agenda, the payment of invoices. Each board member has received in their board package a copy of the invoices that need to be paid. I'll entertain a motion to pay the invoices.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Burnett. Do I have a second? Have a second by Mr. Morgan. Is there any invoice any board member wants to pull out and/or discuss? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Burnett?
Uh.
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 So approved. Next item on our agenda is minutes from our previous meeting from January the twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-five. Entertain a motion to approve those meetings.
So moved.
Or minutes. Have a motion by Mr. Terry. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Burnett. Is there any corrections or additions to the minutes as presented? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? The minutes are approved. We did have an audit presentation on the agenda, but Mr. Stone has, um, postponed that, so we'll move on to old business. We have our designated emergency response agency revisions. Mr. Hankins, I believe it's you.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Uh, at your last meeting, you adopted the emergency operations plan and the DERA plan indicates that, uh, once that plan is adopted, we'll review the, uh, the, the DERA plan. Uh, the last time you adopted the DERA plan, uh, the Rural Retreat Rescue Squad and Land Mines Rescue Squad were both still operating, so this cleans up, uh, that, uh, operation clarifies the first and second due response areas. It also cleans up some of the paperwork, uh, that's, uh, included. Um, one of the reasons why this came up is because we do have a transport agency that is interested in coming before you later this month. And, uh, so we needed to clear up the forms and get those right before they, they submitted that for our review. So I would ask that you adopt the designated emergency response agency plan, uh, so that we can, uh, reflect our, uh, current operations.
All right. I'll entertain a motion to approve the D E R A revisions as presented. Have a motion by Mr. Morgan. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Ms. Lawson. Is there any questions or discussion? All right. Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry?
Uh.
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 So approved. Anything else under old business?
Yes, sir. One item, I, I laid a memo, I laid a copy of an email on your desk, uh, prior to the meeting. Um, we applied for a turnout gear grant, a micro grant from the State Department of Fire Programs. Um, they got a lot of grant applications and they have signaled that they intend to accept ours, but it will be prorated. We won't be at the thirty thousand dollar level, uh, with their proration. It's going to be about forty-eight percent of the maximum award, so about fourteen thousand dollars that we can put for turnout gear. Uh, Mr. Parnell estimates that will buy us approximately three sets, uh, of turnout gear. Uh, we do have some money in the capital budget for buying turnout gear this year, so it does save some, uh, taxpayer money. So we'll be, uh, hopefully using state money for the next three sets, uh, before we use, uh, county funds. So would ask that you, uh, give us your authorization to proceed with this. Uh, they, they are asking that we give them, uh, our confirmation that we intend to accept the grant before your next meeting. So that's why I brought it up under old business.
So just to clarify, fourteen thousand dollars will buy three sets of turnout gear.
We were estimating it would buy two. Uh, we've recently received some updated pricing that's, that's better than what we've been paying. So, uh, we believe we can stretch it and, and get three. But yes, it, it is very pricey gear.
Not that I have a problem with it. I just, uh, like I said earlier, I've been around for a while. I remember what it used to call. I'm leading the discussion about eggs and we'll be around. All right. Entertain a motion to, uh, accept.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Terry and a second by Mr. Smith. Is there any questions or discussion on that? All right. Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Burnett?
Uh.
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 So approved. Anything else under old business? Mr. Bear, do you have anything?
No, sir, do not.
All right. Move on to new business. We've got the Mount Rogers Hazard Mitigation Plan Resolution.
Mr. Chairman, I would request adoption of this. Uh, Mount Rogers prepares a, uh, pre-disaster hazards mitigation plan for, uh, all of the localities. Uh, this is, um, used as a, a planning document and also a document to assist localities with getting, uh, grants for hazards mitigation. So, uh, I would request the board of supervisors adopt this resolution.
All right. I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution two thousand and twenty-five dash three.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Burnett, a second by Mr. Smith. Is there any questions or discussion on that one? All right. Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry?
Uh.
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 So approved. Next, we have a request to purchase voting machine storage cases. Mr. Count, I seen you come in earlier.
Yeah, so, um, so y'all might remember, last year in my budget request, I had put this in there, um, to purchase these cages for our voting machines. That way it makes things more secure, uh, in time of meeting up to election day, uh, while we're out at the precincts. In the meantime, I know we discussed, uh, whenever we were purchasing, since we didn't have to purchase poll books, since we did receive a grant for that. And, um, and in the meantime, there's also some unused funds currently in our budget now that would allow for us to purchase these. So just wanted to come forward y'all tonight and, uh, see if we could get the go-ahead on that.
So we have seventeen thousand, some change for, in, in unspent phones.
Yes.
And this is right at seventeen thousand?
Sixteen eight seventy-five, yes.
We appreciate people that come up here with not only a problem, but a solution.
Absolutely.
And, um, I will say, some of you all might ask why I'm only asking for seven and not eleven. Um, the width of these cages, I have diligently gone around and measured all the doors at all of our schools. And at some of our schools, the width isn't enough for the cages to fit inside, so. Or otherwise, I would be asking for a little bit more, but.
All right. Entertain a motion to approve the request.
So.
Have a motion by Mr. Smith, a second by Ms. Lawson. Is there any questions or discussion on that one? I do have a question.
Yeah.
Those will fit continually voting machines that we get for a while?
Yes, that's, that's a good point.
I think I asked that last.
Because, uh, yeah, I did check just to make sure because as, as we are kind of in the process of maybe the next couple of years exploring the idea of purchasing new voting machines, I wanted to make sure we're in a situation which is law fees and.
Three months after every locality buys them.
Yeah. Yeah. That, that's, you know, if you were the vendor, that would be a good idea, just change the dimensions every time and you'd be good to get it. So.
All right. We'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Burnett?
Uh.
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 So approved. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Mr. Count.
Thank you, lady.
All right. Next, we have General District Court Flooring Project. Mr. Bear?
Yes, uh, Mr. Um, Sayers put out bids, uh, received two bids back requests that you all authorized staff proceeding with Sherman Williams for the flooring project.
All right. Entertain a motion to approve the, or award the bid for the General District Court Flooring Project, Sherman Williams, for the mount advertised. So I'm going to have a motion by Mr. Burnett. Do I have a second? Have a second by Mr. Morgan. Are there any questions or discussion on that one? All right. We'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry?
Uh.
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 So approved. Next, we have a request to approve the Emergency Services Agreement Amendment number one with the town of Withfield. I believe all of us have received this and we have discussed it in the past. I'll entertain a motion to approve that amendment.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Terry. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Smith. Is there any questions or discussion on that one?
It's the same as the other one, just one more.
Uh, yeah, the sixth and seventh year, the part of the original agreement that we would negotiate in good faith to set the mount.
Let me say, well, there was nothing, nothing changed in it that I know from a look at it.
No, no, the, the, the call areas and all that, it was just, just, you know, they were getting their feet wet and seeing what they needed. So this is, and, and I do appreciate the town of Withfield, um, and, and coming to the table with, you know, what they did and, you know, there wasn't a whole lot of back and forth. I think it was a good negotiation, Mr. Bear. I don't.
It, it, it was. We, 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 we provided amount to them. They came back with this amount to us. Um, there, there's still discussion down the road of some vehicles and things like that, but for this agreement, this provides an operational amount for the next two years.
All right. We'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Burnett?
Uh.
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 So approved. Anything else under new business, Mr. Bear?
I do not have anything, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hankins? All right. We'll move on to board reports. We've got the Buildings and Grounds Committee. Yes, Chairman. The Building and Grounds Committee met on February fourth and made the following recommendations. One, awarding the con, awarding the courthouse roofing project to Lead Castler Roofing. All right. Coming from committee, it doesn't need a second. Is there any discussion or questions on that recommendation? All right. Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry?
Uh.
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 So approved. Second item is amending and appropriating thirty-five thousand to five three zero one dash four five zero one six zero for the DSS door replacement project. Again, coming from committee, it doesn't need a second. Any discussion or question on that recommendation?
A way door, is there a replacement?
It's, uh, one door, but they're having to build a door frame and, and it's a secured door. It often has cards wiped. Yeah.
And it's like the eggs in the turnout gear. It's expensive.
Yeah. The biggest part of the cost is the Johnson Control Swipe Card System. Uh, it puts in this door and other doors in the process. That's about twenty-two thousand dollars of the total cost. Uh, members of DSS are here. Uh, we are able to recoup about eighty-five percent of this through state funding.
I was just shocked at thirty-five thousand dollars for a door.
Yeah, it's, it's a whole process, project.
All right. Does anybody else have any questions? All right. We'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Burnett?
Uh.
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 So approved. The third item is awarding the mowing contract to be at J. B. Longcare at an annual price at an annual price of sixty-five thousand, six-one-six. Again, coming from committee, it doesn't need a second. Is there any questions or discussion on that one?
Is this all the mowing for the entire county or thing?
Yes.
That's all, Mr. Chairman.
And that was the low bid?
Yes.
All right, do a roll call vote, Mr. Terry?
Aye.
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 So approved. And that's all the Building and Grounds Committee, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, sir. Budget Committee.
Budget Committee met on February fourth, two thousand twenty-five and made the following recommendations. Authorize the staff to work with Smith County to transfer a radio frequency license needed for their mobile radio system upgrade.
Again, coming from committee, it doesn't need a second. Is there any questions or discussion on that recommendation? All right, hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Burnett?
Aye.
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 So approved.
Authorizing the B A D program letters of support.
Again, coming from committee, it needs a second. Any questions or discussion? All right, do a roll call vote, Mr. Terry?
Aye.
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 That's all from the.
So approved. Move on to board members' time, Mr. Barrett, I'll start.
I don't really have anything, but thank you. Thank you to VDOT for the road clearing after the storm. And then thank you, uh, Barrett, for getting the road sign to drop on right. Pass that on to Landon for me, please.
Will do.
And that's all, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Ms. Lawson?
I have nothing at this time.
Mr. Cook? Mr. Smith?
I have nothing at this time. I've already sent it to Mr. Barrett.
Mr. Morgan?
I just have one item. Have we heard anything from FEMA or anybody about, uh, the dry run, cleaning that or fixing that? What damage down there?
Um, no, we have not heard anything back, uh, from them on it. We met up there three weeks ago with the group looking at the repairs that we were doing and what we're proposing on the water line. I think we did a follow-up with, uh, two individuals about three or four weeks ago to set it up. They don't, we'll do another follow-up with them as well. There was a waterway, we got an email about two weeks ago that the water debris removal and stuff was on hold right now. Do not know the reasons for that. That may be affecting the dry run things as well. We'll do a follow-up and see what's going on with that.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Mr. Terry?
Yes, sir. Uh, just a question from Mr. Hankins and Mr. Barrett. Can we look at, I know we talked at the planning commission, about putting a little more clawback in our site in agreements where they can't, like, graze the land and make the panels have to be higher so cows can graze under, to provide a little more of a deterrent clawback against solar?
I, I think everything's on the table at this point. You're, you're still draft, or you're still working on the ordinance, so, um, we'll, we'll follow the direction of the board.
Uh, I mean, I think it's a good idea to put as much clawback as we can in our site in agreements to try to deter them while we're working on our ordinances.
That, that's consistent with the, uh, comprehensive plan, uh, you know, encouraging more agricultural uses. So, uh, certainly don't see any issues, as long as it's something the board can, can live with.
Awesome, absolutely awesome. That's all I've got, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
All right. Um, I've just got a couple of things. Mr. Barrett, uh, the first thing, yesterday, and, and we ultimately had to close the, the county office down because of the weather. But we had, um, Buildings and Grounds staff and custodial, custodial staff that, that came in, um, pretty much through the thick of the storm and, and worked several hours before we closed the office down. I know Landon usually budgets overtime for snow removal. Can we go ahead and pay them overtime for what they worked tomorrow, or worked yesterday? Or do we need to take board action to do that?
Um, I would, we got money budgeted and processed, but I would request that you all go ahead and authorize overtime paid for those hours worked.
Because it was the custodial staff and, and Buildings and Grounds staff that actually stayed longer because, until we said we weren't gonna have a board meeting. But everybody else got a day off, and they don't make a whole lot of money to start with. But I'll entertain a motion to offer that overtime payment.
Got it.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Cook, second by Mr. Smith. Is there any discussion on that one? All right, we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Burnett?
Aye.
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 All right, so approved. I appreciate that. And the second thing is, uh, talking about the FEMA, I've got a lot of complaints about the FEMA cleanup crews, cutting stuff on the right way and fences and all that. Can, can we push that out on social media and our website? And I can't remember the gentleman, um, that's in this area, but, um, I got enough issues to deal with in West County. I can't control federal agencies.
I will be glad to do so. We have, I have, from you all and from the public in general, we have sent numerous complaints to, um, VDOT, this is subcontracted under VDOT on this. They have continually tried to work with them, saying whether it's not flagging, whether it's dangerous situations, or whether it's cutting outside the right of way. I'll get in touch with Mr. Schwartz and I'll find out as well who, what information we can share on social media for them to contact about those concerns.
Because if I was a betting man, I'd say they're getting paid pretty good, so. They do a little bit better job based on some of the stuff I've seen and I've heard. Besides that, that's all I've got, sir. Next item on the agenda is closed session under two-point-two-thirty-seven-eleven A one, Discussion of Personnel for County Administration and Fire Department Officer Slates. And I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Terry, do I have a second? Have a second by Mr. Morgan. Is there any discussion on that one? All right, hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Terry?
Aye.
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 So approved, will now be in closed session. All right, entertain a motion to come out of closed session. Have a motion by Mr. Terry, do I have a second? Have a second by Mr. Morgan. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now back in open session and on the record, Mr. Terry, if you'll read the certification.
Yes, sir. Whereas the West County Board of Supervisors has convened a closed meeting on the state pursuit and affirmative recorded vote, and in accordance with the Virginia, with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, whereas section two-point-three dash thirty-seven twelve of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the West County Board of Supervisors that such a meeting was conducted in conformity with the Virginia law. Now therefore be resolved that the West County Board of Supervisors hereby certify, to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by the Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which the certification resolution applies. And only such public business matters, as were identified in the motion convened in this closed meeting, were heard, discussed, and are considered by the West County Board of Supervisors. And I'll make that a motion, Mr. Chairman.
All right, I have a motion by Mr. Terry, do I have a second? Have a second by Mr. Morgan. We'll do, any questions or discussion on that one? All right, we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Burnett?
Aye.
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 So approved. I'll open the floor up for any motion.
Yes, Chairman, I make a motion to approve the slave officers presented by Ivanhoe Volunteer Fire Department. Asked as any.
All right, have a motion by Mr. Burnett, do I have a second?
Second.
Was that you?
Yes, sir.
Have a second by Mr. Terry. Is there any questions or discussion on the motion? All right, we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Terry?
Aye.
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 So approved. Mr. Barrett, anything else to come before the board?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Hankins? Mr. Farley?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Collins? All right, hearing nothing else to come before the board, we'll be adjourned.